Hello, good evening.[104.81-107.81][S05] I'm Eleanor Christie.[107.81-110.81][S05] I'm the German teacher here at the high school,[110.81-113.81][S05] and I want to thank you for supporting the German language program[113.81-116.81][S05] here in the district and the GAP program at the high school.[116.81-119.81][S05] I don't know if you're aware of this program[119.81-122.81][S05] being in existence since the seventies[122.81-124.81][S05] in the United States and in Germany,[124.81-127.81][S05] and it's supported by both governments of each country.[127.81-130.81][S05] And it's a reciprocal program[130.81-133.81][S05] so that students can grow into learning about cultures[133.81-136.81][S05] of each other's country, learning the language,[136.81-138.81][S05] and appreciating one another.[138.81-141.81][S05] We've grown to become good friends with the governments,[141.81-144.81][S05] and we are trying to get the students to grow up[144.81-147.81][S05] and appreciate one another and be more diverse in the world.[147.81-150.81][S05] And I hope that you understand how important it is[150.81-153.81][S05] to learn foreign languages in our growing world,[153.81-156.81][S05] shrinking world actually, in a huge global economy.[156.81-159.81][S05] So without me telling you more about it,[159.81-162.81][S05] because I know that it's coming from me,[162.81-164.81][S05] I know it's important.[164.81-167.81][S05] But I have one of my students here, a freshman, Annie,[167.81-170.81][S05] and she hosted one of the students,[170.81-173.81][S05] and you can hear it from one of the students here yourselves.[173.81-176.81][S06] Hello, my name is Annie Urrig.[176.81-179.81][S06] I'm a freshman here and was actually the youngest[179.81-182.81][S06] to participate in the GAP program this year.[182.81-185.81][S06] Everyone else was sophomores and juniors and seniors,[185.81-188.81][S06] so I was the only freshman to do it[188.81-191.81][S06] and was actually a last-second entry.[191.81-194.81][S06] At the end of eighth grade, my German teacher then Frau Broderick,[194.81-197.81][S06] now Frau Brunel, told the class[197.81-199.81][S06] that they were looking for students to host.[199.81-202.81][S06] And I asked my mother, who unfortunately declined my request.[202.81-205.81][S06] So I didn't get to host it.[205.81-208.81][S06] But then in November, or September,[208.81-211.81][S06] I came home to my mother telling me[211.81-214.81][S06] that she had gotten an email from Frau Christie,[214.81-217.81][S06] an email from Frau Christie saying[217.81-220.81][S06] that I had, without consulting my mother,[220.81-223.81][S06] told my German teacher that I wanted to host a student.[223.81-226.81]
So we, since my mother is a bit of a sucker for that type of thing,[226.81-229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81][229.81]
Kind of in that order of.
Yeah.
Hierarchy.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I was looking at it, the, the blue, the high priority, that's fifty percent or more. I feel like that should be like the starting point. If, but this is everybody, all nine people now, right, are in here?
Yep.
Yep.
So. Nine responses.
So then we can do it that way.
Yeah, somehow if we can get it in another form, a chart form, maybe, that lists like, as Tim said and you said,
Uh huh.
Blue column with the percentages from highest to lowest, and then the red from highest to lowest.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Might give us a good feeling.
Some of them, sorry, some of them are, I guess, are vague too, like professional development. And then if you look at the, um, the list, and I'm looking at the expanded leadership council list. So like, there's things that could overlap, it just depends on what, right? Like, it just says professional development, which is vague. And then we could look at this list and see what would fall under that.
Right, it would be helpful to kind of marry the two.
Yeah.
I know, um, district communication as well, sixty-six percent. I'd try that as high, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that was a high one.
Some of the items are just too broad, but they're still, uh, like, transportation is listed at a middle priority of fifty-five point six, and thirty-three point three is blue. But what does that entail? Is that saying we want to put more money in transportation for salaries, buses? It's kind of a broad, I, I know that I was one of the people that did say transportation, because I know it's important, but you don't really know what that entails.
I, I would piggyback on that, I think you can say the same on safety and security. Um, you know, that's a fifty-five point six, high priority, and then thirty-three point three, middle. But again, what is that? What, what are we talking about exactly? I just know from, uh, going into the middle school last Friday, I mean, it was like Fort Knox. Like, I was really impressed with the security that they have there, and even watching some of the staff members, uh, uh, there was a group of us waiting in the lobby, and staff members were coming in, and they had to beep into the office, or swipe a card, I should say, into the office. And then when they came out, they're doing it again, and then they had to do it again to get into the next level. I mean, it was, it was very, uh, impressive that, that there's that level of security. So, and I, and I know just in talking to teachers around the district, the common theme is a lot of them say they feel very safe and secure in their buildings. Um, so, that's good, very good news to hear. So, um, and I'm not saying that we don't need to continue to look at that and update and upgrade and things like that, but, but again, like you were saying, that broadness of the topic, what exactly, you know, do we want to look at there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, and I know we've got public, uh, um, public comment or public support for maybe additional resource officers and things like that. So, you know, I think that's a great topic to, uh, to chew on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, because further down, we have more specifics about, you know, uh, safety measures, and those answers come out much more divided, um, so, um, yeah.
That was interesting to me.
Right, to say safety, yeah, um, but then what kind of safety are we talking about? And, and there seems to be disagreement there, so. Um, I, I put the bus safety down, and that's just from, uh, when I went to do this, I found groups of students to ask, because, um, you know, kind of what I like to do. And, um, and, uh, the elementary students overwhelmingly said, uh, that, um, they have a lot of problems on the bus. Um, so, and I know that we, we've heard comments like that, so, uh, I just thought I'd mention that. The other stuff that, that a lot of the kids asked for were very utilitarian, uh, you know, the water fountains and, um, you know, things like that.
Any other observations or comments?
I think some of the things I felt, I wasn't sure if including them was a strain on, you know, we're looking at, at budget, not just at, at the development, and I wasn't always sure that, um, you know, like, the mental health and mental health facility, how much more are we, are we putting in? Or how much are we looking at in terms of a budget? Not just, we support it and agree with it, but is it a big budget item? And that's, some things were sort of hard to figure out.
These are, these are broad categories, not specifics. I imagine as the year progresses, we'll move more towards specifics, or looking at the.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just didn't know if it was a big financial concern, if it wasn't a big financial concern, are we putting it in with the budget?
Yep.
Yeah, because some of it really doesn't equate to dollars and cents. It's just like getting us with our goals for the board.
Yeah, it was go, goals, not dollars.
Well, in some respects, for us, at least on the board, we may not know all the things that are in place. So, we're saying this is important, well, let's look at it, maybe, and when we find out what's in place, we may not feel it's a, that kind of a priority anymore. It's really, I think what we're doing at this stage is just kind of highlighting the priorities we'd like to look at. But we may decide after we look at it that, well, maybe not, maybe it's not what we thought. And we get the information we need.
Even preparing for later start times at the high school, are we at, we're not at a point now where we're going to be putting any money towards it.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's really just.
If it's a priority, we need to put the time in.
Yeah, right.
summary, what exactly are you looking for from us this evening?
All of the answers. So, um, we can go through with the data that was in, rank them, and we can share that back out on Friday, and then we can take a look at that in the district office as well, in conjunction with, um, the list that you saw from the administrative team, and, um.
You can start to pair them together a little bit.
Yeah. So.
We're on the same page.
We are in the middle, sort of, of stage two. We had, I think, three or four of our meetings so far, we've got several more coming up.
Okay.
So, um, I think that rank order of, of this might be helpful, and then, um, we may have to come back to see what those priorities actually translate into, so.
Okay, some more to come.
Yeah, it's a good start.
Okay. Barbara?
Just a follow-up on the full-time TAs at kindergarten and grade one. Well, that was, one of us requested that?
Yes, these are all board member ideas.
Okay, um, give me a little feedback on that, whoever wanted to see that. Are we hearing from teachers that they want more TAs in their classroom, or what precipitated that?
It seems like, it seems like that's kind of a, a common theme that we hear every year, and also, for the past two years at least, we've had big discussions about class size, right? As the budget gets close, so I think it's important to look at those things in conjunction. If you can't reduce the class size in any way, can you put more adults in the room? So I think it's something that we, we look at every year. Seema, did you want?
Yeah, I, I put that down, I mean, pretty much for the same reason, that it keeps coming up to have, um, especially K-one, like, the primary grades, to have a little bit more support in the room. I don't remember exactly the hours, but it seemed like they were just in each of those rooms for a very, like, short amount of time. Yeah.
Few hours.
It's three hours.
Okay.
Barbara?
And the other question was the, um, the TAs, um, not, not just there, but, I'm losing my train of thought here. Let me find my little spot here, sorry. Oh, the Project Lead the Way was the other one. I, have we made any progress this year? I know you were working on it.
We were working on it, um, the technology department has done a number of site visits, and they have evaluated the Project Lead the Way program for the middle level in comparison to other pro, programs. They're actually leaning toward a different, the Vex Robotics program, more so than the Project Lead the Way, which has, um, well, it, it's a good program, I will say that. Um, the, I guess, the ready updating of that program is not as great, so there are some things that are missing from it, coding being the most critical part of it. So they're, they're leaning more so toward a Vex Robotics program than, you know, the Project Lead the Way at the middle school right now.
So we're envisioning that potentially for next year, for the middle school?
Yes, I, I think, um, Beth Bisnet at the middle school is going to include some of those components in her stage-two budget. We also have some technology upgrades that we have to do to accommodate that program. Um, I went down, I spent a bit of time with the tech ed teachers at the middle school. They demonstrated some of the programs and the software, and it's, it's quite sophisticated. It's really pretty impressive, so, that's where they are right now.
The last question, I had the permanent substitute in every class, in every school.
You have found it very beneficial, I take it, to have one at the high school?
Yes, the, the, well, both the high school and the middle school, the amount of money that we spent on internal subs essentially paid for the, um, building subs. Um, and it's incredibly helpful to be able to have someone that you can deploy internally. Elementary level has looked at it also, um, there, we don't have the same level of savings, that same rationale that we used to get the building subs at the middle and high school doesn't exist at the elementary level, um, but that doesn't negate the need.
And if you were to do that, like, some of schools, like Altamont, are smaller than, say, Gilderlin or Westmere, so would you envision, like, a floater, or a couple of floaters, or?
Now, if we were to ease that in, and maybe get, you know, two permanent subs at the elementary, or three permanent subs at the elementary, that would be a great start before putting one in every building, but I can tell you that there would be a need in every single building. We are often going without enough subs.
And over time, have you found that there are more and more need for substitutes as our families getting sicker? Or, I, I just remember there being them, you know, go, go back twenty years, that, that many people all sick all the time.
No, it, it's really, it's, I don't know if the attendance rates have changed. I, I think it's the availability of subs. And we've lost a lot of, of, uh, individuals interested in teaching. Um, when we had that downturn, we've lost a lot of teachers, they went on the sub lists, we had lots and lots of subs, and then they had to find more regular employment. And quite frankly, a trained educator is a pretty valuable employee in just about any industry out there. So, they got scapped up, and, and the same thing is happening at universities and colleges. They're not attracting individuals into the, the education programs. There are large-scale recruitments going on across the United States to encourage people to go into teaching again. Um, I, I think that in time, it'll turn around, but there are an awful lot of factors that led to a shortage of teachers.
Seema?
I just have two, uh, well, I guess, one comment and one question. The safe, like, I think we can consolidate some of these, I guess, pie charts, because, like, safety comes up in different ways in a bunch of them, so, I don't know how we can maybe look at that, um, and figure out within that category what we prioritize. And then, um, who, I don't understand, the water fountains was put down? I just didn't know what the.
Yeah, um, that's, that's for me, um, a lot of students are, um, I haven't been to the high school in a while, but there's three main, there's three good wa, water fountains, and, um, so, and we all know where they are. So, I think that's, that was just one of them. Uh, there was another thing like that, that, that students said.
What do you mean, three good, like, their other ones aren't?
There's different kinds of fountains now.
Yeah, they, they fill up your water bottle for you, and, or they're extra cold, or, uh, I, I, I put them down, because I told the kids that I would. Air conditioning came up a lot, um, so I put that down too. But, that, that, that's, that's what they mean, is that they're dissatisfied with the water fountains. They had, they had very, uh.
This is just the high school?
Um, water fountains are at the high school, air conditioning was elementary and middle and high school.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to know water fountains.
Ben, did you put them down because you agreed with their priorities? I mean.
No, I, I, I let them. Each group got to pick one thing that they wanted the most, elementary, school, one, plus safety.
There should be a way of us separating those out then, because this is supposed to be the board's priority, so if we need to, we want the kids, students, and maybe we could.
If the kids are really concerned about it, then it is a priority for me.
Yeah, but it should, I, what I'm saying is, I would like to know that it's coming from them and not from the nine of us.
Yeah, that's why I was, when I saw that, I was like, is there something going on with water fountains?
That you don't know about?
Yeah, so.
Somehow that we should separate, put those in one group, and, and if we wanted to, to find out from the kids, then we should ask the kids probably. I mean, you did, but maybe we should do it more scientifically.
All right, yeah, I, my, my only thing was going in, uh, you know, so much of the budget is already allocated, you know, before we even sit down to talk about the little things, and so I was like, I don't know what little things I want, um, that I would want, so I, I went to a whole bunch of students, because, um, they know what they need more than I do. So, um, that was just the thought, and, and so, that kind of is my priority, if, if the students want it. But it wasn't, there's no issue with the.
Okay.
Water fountains, if that was what the question was.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Sure.
I just, so the transporta, I'm looking at the list from the administrators, and for transportation, so it says, is my reading this right, that causing up to a million dollars in outsourcing for routing structure to other districts, because?
That's correct.
That's like crazy.
That's because of the driver shortage?
It's the driver shortage.
Driver shortage.
Okay.
So, like, even though a lot of us put transportation down, I think, as a, at least middle or high priority, like, how would funding, like, change that, like, how, you know, would it help attract? Because of salaries, or like recruiting, I guess, I'm confused.
Well, there's two, two challenges with, well, there's more than two challenges, but two that are driving up that particular cost. One is the driver shortage. The other is, um, the placement of students with significant disabilities are further and further away. So, it's hard to consolidate bus runs in an efficient way when students are traveling far distances for specialized program. And we have a high number of that right now. So, those two things have resulted in the need to contract out a lot of runs, so, a million dollars is an accurate number.
Wow, get all those zeros.
Tim?
I just wanted to comment quick on the point about, uh, the subs and substitution, and, and that's a situation, whether it's, uh, in the classroom for teachers' teaching assistance, whether it's bus drivers, school nurses, you name it, uh, you're, you're looking at that, uh, substitution across the whole district. And, um, again, you know, when you go back twenty years or so ago, uh, I, I'm sure the data would show there was less, um, there was also less staff, uh, but there was maybe less, uh, absenteeism or, or attendance issues, uh, for employees. So much has changed with, with the profession, and I can only really speak to the elementary level, but just, uh, there's, the, the classroom has changed so much, and I know people get weirded out when I say this, but it's just the way it is, uh, with the advent of testing and, and other measures, and, and the compilation of your classroom, where now it, it might not just be the teacher in the classroom and the teaching assistant, you might have six other adults in there at any one time. Uh, on top of that, classrooms are germ factories, uh, there's just no getting around it, and so, so you do have, uh, there, there was always that kind of old wives' tale that you build up a resistance over time. You don't, um, that would have been nice if it worked that way, but it just doesn't. And, uh, you know, this time of year especially, you're, with the weather swings and kids are coughing all over the place, and so, you do see an increase, uh, in, uh, the need for subs, uh, for all sorts of reasons. Um, with, with testing comes correcting of the tests. So, in the springtime, you see a lot of teachers pulled out of the classroom, because they're participating in, in testing or scoring, I mean, and so, that requires subs. There's, uh, uh, professional development that you might be pulled out of the classroom for, that's increased over time, all good, very good, and, uh, but it creates the need for, for subs. So you have a lot more staff, a lot more need for subs, and, um, and also, the profession is, uh, just more stressful. And so you have, uh, the need for, you know, a mental health day every now and then, because you just have to do it, because you have to take care of yourself, so that you can be there for your students. So, you know, those are just all of the realities, some of those existed twenty years or so ago, but, uh, everything kind of ratchets up over time. And so, you know, all of that puts the, puts every school building in a bind for, for subs, and, uh, you know, I just know for a fact that the, the principals are scrambling, uh, many days, if not, I think you can almost say every day, to, uh, to have warm bodies, to be in the classrooms, and to be, uh, in the gyms, or the hallways at the high school, maybe, uh, you know, you name it. So, so it's a big problem, and, uh, if, if you talk to some teaching assistants every once in a while, you might hear a comment that, uh, you know, I can go work somewhere for fifteen dollars an hour, and if I put in an eight-hour day, I'm going to make more than if I was, uh, subbing, uh, for a teaching assistant in a classroom, and so there's economic realities there too. So there's a lot of factors, and it, it's a problem that's not going to go away anytime soon, I don't think, so.
You do need to consider that there are fewer and fewer subs too. You know, so, so it compounds both ways, and if we could have that one.
Absolutely.
One person in each school, it, it could make it easier. But it's, the two, all the things you were saying, and then the pool that you're drawing from is smaller to fill more places.
Yeah.
And that's why a permanent sub is, is a good idea.
It's a little help, but at least it's some help.
It's a start.
Yeah.
And then you have somebody who knows the kids in that school, prob, at least elementary. They would know the kids, they know the teachers, they know the routine.
Yeah.
And lo, so when we lost all the, the teachers who used to come in, we lost a lot of those as subs and that, because they knew the school, they knew the district, and they probably knew the kids.
Yeah.
So there have been a lot of combination of things.
That might, if we did a new survey on just that, it might be red-blue, would move it up to the, uh, upper threshold there, so. But yeah, it's a big one to look at, for sure.
And you want more than a warm body.
Wow.
Damian, I have, I have a question, if I could. Um, Project Lead the Way, if we go to this new, is that going to then change the high school, or will the high school?
No, high school will remain the same.
Okay.
Um, and there are some, some connectors, I would say, between the.
Okay.
Vex Robotics and the high school program as well.
Yeah, I was just thinking, in the future, as, as an expense, is that going to be something that we're going to have to deal with?
No, I don't, I don't see a change on the horizon for the high school at this point. I think there might be some additions or complements to the Project Lead the Way at the high school, but I think the general program.
Anyway, just as a, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Seema?
I had a question, maybe, for Neil, um, so this is lead testing is due again in 2020. Do we do it last year? Was it last year, the year before?
No, it started in two thousand sixteen.
When I started.
Do you?
It started, and, and they set it to occur every five years, but going on the common year.
Okay.
So, 2020, 2025.
Do we know, like, how much, wasn't the state supposed to reimburse, reimburse for s, part of it? Can you just remind me, like, how much was it overall, and like, how much is this? Because I, I just don't remember the number.
Got multiple years of data in at this point, um, I, rather than guess, I'll get back to you with that information.
And then the, oh, sorry, one more question.
Oh, sure.
Sorry. I just saw this thing.
Pick on him, go ahead, pick on him.
I know, I lied, sorry. The solar, the solar farm thing, so that is, um, something we're saving, that forty thou, that going online? I just am trying to understand what that comment is.
Uh, those savings, well, eventually, yes, we'll get savings from the solar when it's online. Is that, is that the, um, from Cliff's comments?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that savings was separate and apart from the solar farm.
Is it on the utility side or something?
There is savings in the utility part, um, solar farm is, is progressing, um, but right now, we're hopeful that it'll be up in, in July, but, um, not quite sure, it all depends on national grid and interconnections and so on and so forth, so, um, and then, um, we didn't, don't expect the first year to be great just because that's the way we're starting the implementation, going into winter, um, so we're cautious on the solar savings.
And we've been hopeful for a lot of years, and it would be coming.
But construction is occurring, so.
Yeah, it looks good, I go by every day, it looks great.
I just want to say something about the PT room at GHS.
Sure, yeah.
Um, can we just get an update as to what's going on with that?
Sure, we already have re-outfitted, uh, room for that PT. I think it was opened up the day after Thanksgiving break, so it's all set.
And is it, it's adequate?
It's beautiful.
Okay.
So that won't be an expense in next year's budget?
No, um, Cliff and his team were able to kind of retrofit an office space.
Okay.
And, um, they made it look good in about three days' time.
That's great. I'm sorry, we, we should have shared the email, I thought everybody was on there. Um, the parent who had reached out to us, sent a follow-up email to us that their child is very happy and satisfied with the outcome on the new space.
Yes, I did get that.
Oh, okay.
I just didn't know what.
You did.
What we did.
Okay, okay.
I just knew that it was in the vicinity.
I didn't know if people thought it was still an outstanding issue.
No, no.
So we converted kind of a office space in Siberian, we're in the seven hundred wing.
Okay.
So, kind of near the English Social Studies classrooms, uh, it's got an entrance directly off the, um, hallway, so it's very private, they frosted the windows, it's, they did a beautiful job.
Yeah, but, I just thought that where it was, I didn't know that that's where it was prior to where it is now. I just thought, how, how did that ever happen? Like, you can't really have something like that with a computer lab situation.
Well, we had another PT room off of the classrooms where we serve multiply disabled students, the, or self-contained students, and, um, that space wasn't, uh, sufficient for the equipment that was needed. So over the summer, um, um, they scoured the high school building and created the space within the west computer lab, and that turned out to be not the best, so we have now found another spot.
Good, thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, um, it was mentioned briefly, but I just want to, um, note again that there's a lot of support for, um, electives and, um, and, uh, really, choice, it seems like, uh, AP was in there. Uh, one of the things that I put down, um, I described it as curriculum development support, and it got low support, uh, probably just unclear. Uh, what I meant by that was, um, you know, providing some sort of incentive for teachers to come up with electives. Um, I know that, uh, from discussions with teachers, that there's a lot of ideas out there, um, not a lot of time or, um, um, motivation to really, um, trying to get something down. Uh, for example, Mitch Han, um, has been talking about getting like a discussion-type, um, class going in English. Um, Alana Rudolph had ideas about combining, um, economics and American history into a kind of like a two-year course, instead of splitting them up and having them, um, be one each. And I'm sure, uh, lots of other teachers have lots of ideas like that too, um, so, so that's kind of what I meant by that. And, um, given that there's a lot of support for keeping electives, or adding electives, or adding AP classes, um, you know, just, just a, a thought, um, that, well, we need to make them first, so.
That's a good point, thank you. And I, I put down that about, um, additional AP sections, so that no students get shut out, and I know in other districts, their position is that if a student wants to take it, they'll find a way for the student to take it, and they'll open additional sections. Um, I didn't know, and I know we also have a larger discussion about, uh, Gelderlin's rankings, and I think that would be something that would assist in improving in the rankings, which was the rationale as to why I put that down. Are there other comments or questions on this? And we'll have time going forward to continue to discuss these issues, but it sounds like we're off to a good start. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the November thirteenth meeting, the CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara, second. Teresa? Are there any questions or comments on this one?
I just wanted to ask a question on the, uh, school lunch fund report. And again, I'm just always trying to make sure I'm understanding these things right. So I think last year I asked at the same time about what I would call a structural deficit that happens early in the year, that always kind of mitigates itself later in the year. And in fact, last year, there was a very good, uh, number on the plus side, so that usually works out that way, it seems like anyway. So I was just curious that if you go back to October two thousand seventeen, there was this deficit of almost forty thousand dollars at this time last year, or at the end of October last year. And this time around, it was only, um, just about, just a little over sixteen thousand and a half, sixteen thousand five hundred thirty-four. So, I was just curious, like, that's a pretty big difference from one year to the next. Um, I'm assuming that it's market factors, food prices, uh, staffing changes, things like that, but I, I was just curious as to what, what you thought of that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a timing issue, so early on in the year, um, depending on how much inventory we carry, how much, um, new products we have to, to buy, change in staffing, all of those factors contribute to why there could be changes early in the year in particular, um, and you'll kind of see that pattern if you look back historically, some years, um, bigger deficits, some years a smaller deficit, but it is a transition to a brand-new school year, um, but it could be equipment repair, all sorts of supplies, materials, equipment. But it could be equipment repair, all sorts of supplies, materials, equipment.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Linda, I'm kind of abstained from the meeting minutes since I wasn't here for the first part of the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine-zero with the one abstention.
Yes. We, I don't know if we.
Zero, sorry.
I don't know if we just want to mention this, but from the previous.
Seven.
Sean's not here.
Oh, Sean's not here.
He's the only one that's not here, though, right?
And you said you're abstaining.
With the one abstention, but I voted yes on the other things.
Oh.
I just want to mention, in the, in the under-budget development, we did receive, and I, I'd like to give, thank Christine Lash, she sent us a nice SNN regarding, you know, just an idea for the budget for next year. And I know we didn't have a lot of public input yet, but just to let the public know that we're always looking and welcoming their input. And Christine had a very nice suggestion.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a good point. Okay, and now we move to information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thank you. I'll start with some news from our music department. We have ten students who have been recognized by the New York State Band Directors Association. Each year, from hundreds of applicants, honor band members are chosen based on their NISM score from the previous spring. Each ensemble rehearses and performs during the New York State Band Director's Annual Symposium, which is held at the Syracuse Convention Center from March first through third, 2019. Selected to perform in the high school honor band under the direction of Michael Voda from the University of Maryland are Aiden Fusco on trumpet, Alex Jambanathan on trumpet, Vivian Redman on trombone. Glenn Treshel was recognized as an alternate. Performing with the middle school honor band are Hannah Bowman on trumpet, Boden Canal on baritone sax, Jacob Palmer on trumpet, Olivia Petty on oboe, Carson Rittner on clarinet. Dr. Karen Levois from Westfield State University will conduct the middle school honor band. Performing in the jazz ensemble under the direction of Pete Meliverney from SUNY Purchase is Aiden Doyle on trombone. And selection to these prestigious ensembles demonstrates exceptional musicianship and is an outstanding accomplishment, so we certainly want to extend congratulations to all of our, our recognized students. The world of our graduates, we had three graduates, Jonah Goldstein, Arne Avkanan, and Tressa Powellfill. And their advisor, Amy Salamone, have written and submitted a proposal entitled "Disengage Student Voices on Our Youth Crisis" for the 2019 South by Southwest EDU Conference, and they have been accepted. So they will be presenting at the national conference in Austin, Texas, in March, in March of 2019, so congratulations to them. And then lastly, our Fall 2018 Scholar-Athlete Team Awards. Congratulations to all of our fall sports teams for qualifying for the 2018 Scholar-Athlete Team Award. And to qualify, each team has to maintain a ninety percent team average or above. The sports teams recognized this season are the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team, Field Hockey, Golf, Boys Soccer, Girls Soccer, Girls Swimming and Diving, Girls Tennis, Boys Volleyball, and Girls Volleyball.
Great, thank you, Damian. Are there any questions or comments for Damian? Okay, and then we move to superintendent information. Murray?
Okay, thank you. My first item is an update on our fall recycling extravaganza at Fernsworth Middle School. This fall, a recycling event had to be rescheduled for Saturday, November seventeenth. Mrs. Renee Panetta, who's our recycling coordinator, shared some of the following information. Attendance was a little bit lower than at other events. This is likely due to our weather conditions and the fact that it had to be rescheduled. The weather this fall, as you know, has been remarkably poor. We had three hundred and thirty-two cars come through, many of them more than once. I think the Wiles family fell into that category. We had, from American Clothing Recyclers, twenty-one hundred pounds bikes. We had a hundred and ten of them. We had clothing and small household items totaling eighty-six hundred pounds. We had two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five pounds of books, twenty-seven hundred pounds of single-stream recyclables, recyclables totaling seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five to date. And we're still holding out on some weights for many of our heavy items and quantities for bottles and plastic bags, but those include Durapool medical supplies, furniture, metals, electronics. So thanks to everyone who attended, volunteered, and recycled. And my second item tonight is a brief update on our task force that's investigating school start times. We had our second large group meeting last evening, December third. We have five subgroups who are doing the work of the study of this topic, one of them who is reviewing the review of this research. We have another group who is gathering data about Gilderland students and families. We have a group who will be focusing on community outreach, another group who is designing the potential options for any changes to start time, and another group who is working on policy implications at the local, state, and federal level. So we met last night. Each of the groups reported out on the work they've been doing since we met the first time. The smaller groups have been meeting multiple times and connecting via technology. And two of those groups will be presenting to the Board of Education at our next board meeting on December eighteenth. One will be the, the literature review group, that will talk about the medical and other research that's been done around the topic. And then the second group is the group who have been collecting data about our students at the middle and high school level, and I think they're trying to gather some elementary level data as well. So hard work, hard-working groups, and I think we've made some nice progress. We also participated in a joint meeting of three, with three other suburban council school districts back on November fifth. Niskayuna, Bethlehem, and East Greenbush are also at various points in the journey on this discussion and decision-making process. And at that meeting, we kind of shared where we were in our efforts. Niskayuna is ahead of us a little bit. They've been at this for well over a year. Bethlehem, East Greenbush, and Gilderland were all kind of in the beginning stages. So we have agreed to create a shared Google document that will become a kind of a repository of our work, so if we want to borrow research or see sample surveys that have been created, et cetera, we have opened it up across the school districts, so we're getting some synergy from our efforts rather than recreating the wheel four times over. So, so far, so good. And Barbara and Ben are on the committee. Damian's on the committee. Have I missed anything?
The Google Drive that the districts are using to collaborate, could, could the board get access to that once you start putting data sets and articles in there?
Probably. I'd probably want to talk with the creators of it, make sure they're okay with that, but I don't see any reason why not.
Yeah. The, Barbara and I got to see a sneak peek of some of the presentations that we'll all get in two weeks, and one that I found particularly compelling was the, the one on data from Gilderland students. And so there's, there's seventy-something slides in that PowerPoint. I don't know if they're gonna go through all them with us.
They're not.
But, but that's a, you know, that's a lot of great data that I, you know, we'd love to get a look at, so.
Yes, very good work being done. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. And now we move down to board president information items, and there are a variety of policies this evening that are on for a first read. Barbara, did you want to comment on any of these?
No, I think they're sort of self-explanatory.
Okay.
Many of them are just reviewing, you know, old policies that we have to take a look at every few years.
Okay, great, thank you. And now we move to action items, school business management action. Neil?
Thank you, Christine. First item this evening is resolution to accept delinquent tax rolls in the composite tax collection report. This is from our 2018-19 tax collection. The amount of uncollected taxes was just over one point six-four million, so people that didn't pay within the sixty-day payment period, Dallas monies now get turned over to Albany County. We'll attempt to collect them. Regardless of whether they collect them or not, they will make us whole. So April first or so, we will get this one point six-four million back from the county, and, and we'll have our full tax collection at that time.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution? Seema, second. Ben, questions or comments? Barbara?
I have a question. That's a huge sum of money.
Yeah.
Is it mostly corporations or is it mostly individual homeowners?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I would guess it's mostly homeowners, because commercial enterprises typically pay, but I'd have to look at the data specifically to see that.
Teresa?
Where does that money go into our budget, one line item? Is that just?
It's on the revenue side, so it's, it's in the tax levy. It's the amount we collect in taxes from the taxpayers.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight-zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the renewal of the uniform mop and mat service bid with UniFirst Corporation, effective January first, two thousand nineteen, and this will be the fourth year of the fifty-four-month agreement.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Judy, second. Tim, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight-zero.
Next is a service agreement, and that is for the federal IDEA, IDEA flow-through funds, and it's with Vanderheiden Hall.
May I have a motion to approve the service agreement? Teresa, second. Seema, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight-zero.
Finally, this evening, we have non-resident tuition rates for the 2018-19 school year, and those are generated by the New York State Education Department. So for our school district, in grades K through six, the amount of non-resident tuition would be twelve thousand twenty-two dollars, and for students in grade seven through twelve, it's twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
May I have a motion to approve the tuition rates? Barbara, second. Gloria, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight-zero. Thank you, Neil. And now we move down to board president information. We have several policies to approve this evening. May I have a motion to approve the list of policies that's before you? Tim, second. Teresa, are there any questions or comments on any of these policies? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight-zero. And so now we move down to board committee reports. We'll begin with audit.
We met yesterday morning, thankfully, at eight-thirty, because I was actually fifteen minutes early, thinking it was eight-fifteen. We went over a few items. We had the Quest AR three areas for the 2018-2019 internal audit. We decided to go with an audit that would take, I think he said, about two weeks?
Total two weeks, yes.
Two-week audit. Doing, the two topics that we were going to have audited were the staff, staff attendance and the, what was the second one? I forget now.
User permissions related to student information?
Correct, yep. And then we did management response risk assessment for the 2017-2018. We went over that. And we did what we typically do at meetings is we have an internal claims reports done by Donna, who goes over our NHX or things that may have been missed in auditing them routinely. She does them every few, she does them at every audit and finance meeting. We usually get a report from her. There's nothing really to write home about.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Business practices?
I had my other one ready to go. Okay, well, yes, we did meet on November ninth, and Dan Woodside, who is the executive, the principal with CSR, she met with us for a discussion of our defeated capital project. He shared his, his perspective and his experience with unsuccessful capital projects, which was helpful to us to hear some of the things he shared. In addition to his experience, he found that defeats of capital project votes are rare. In his opinion, our project is pretty basic, and the referendum consisted of needed infrastructure work with a layering in of some program improvements. Dan's firm is working with many school districts that are redesigning their classroom spaces and their environments to meet the new twenty-first century learner. He does recommend to, he recommended to the committee at the meeting to take some time to review the referendum exit poll feedback and analyze the responses before moving forward, which we, of course, are intending to do. He advised that the project may need to be scaled back with a focus on the most critical needs, although he cautioned that all the work will still need to be done at some point. Dan also recommended that when considering a revote, he recommended we look at May, even though voter retention was, will already be high at that point, that's true, but, and there will be other things going on with the voting, including a library bond, so, but we, we did agree with him that May would be the better chance, that would be too much to put together at this point and do it in the winter, like January or something. In discussing, in discussing the May vote, Dan noted it will delay the bulk of the construction, however, by a year, and will also add cost, unfortunately. He noted that the voter referendums held in the fall, which is when we usually do it in, in October or November, they yield the best opportunity to obtain the lowest prices for construction. Once the voters approve a referendum, then it takes five to seven months for the architects to design the project and another seven to nine months to get approval from state ed. So the timeline places bidding of the project in January to March timeframe when the contractors aren't committed already, so they're more open to accepting and, and more open to competitive pricing. A May vote, unfortunately, will cause the district to be in a less favorable bid cycle and will fall well beyond the summer construction window necessary for school projects. So this is gonna delay things a year and add cost. That will create a delay until the following summer, which will add another year on price escalation and uncertainty that must be factored into the cost. This is all that the committee was taking in from Dan. A recommended option for the May vote, should, should it be successful, is to package some things, and he talked about packaging it in a subset of work consisting of the most urgent and critical health and safety needs first, on getting them on into an expedited approval process, and then letting the others take a more normal course. The district would have to pay for an expedited third-party review, but the cost would still be beneficial under these circumstances, because we get the critical and most urgent things done and out there for a vote. And then we let the remainder of the project go through a normal construction of start in 2021. After this discussion with Dan, the committee did vote to support a May vote rather than selecting another date. I asked about feedback from the referendum vote survey, and we'll be, we'll be taking some time to look at that before we make our recommendation. All those results have been posted to the websites. Everyone's free to look at those responses. The committee also favored prioritizing elements of the projects before we come to the board. And so Cliff is taking a lead on that, of course, with Dan and CSR, and putting together a scope and the most prioritized, you know, putting the most needy things that be done first and then giving, coming back to the business practices next meeting, which will be in December, oh, very shortly, December twelfth. We'll be meeting, hopefully Cliff will be ready with that report. Committee also discussed ways to engage and receive feedback from the community during this process, so we'll be looking at these months before the May vote, getting some more community feedback. And the board's communication committee will be asked to explore, perhaps using a new product, if, if we go ahead with it, called Thought Exchange, which we'll talk about later. That might be helpful to engaging the community as we move forward with the second attempt at, at the capital project. And the last item we discussed was radon mitigation. Cliff provided a brief history to us of the radon, what we've been doing. We've been proactive in this for a very long time, even though it's not required. Testing of all school buildings in 2008 found some limited spaces in the high school, and we've done a number of things to remediate those things. During the discussions with the teacher association, building and health safety representatives, it was decided to retest some areas this spring, since several years have passed. Some areas where radon mitigations were in place tested above the action level again, and this could have been caused by earth shifts or changes within the building. So we're working with the environmental engineering firm to develop a plan to remediate those areas as soon as possible. And that's it. Our next meeting is December twelfth at eight-fifteen at the district office.
Thank you, Gloria. That was a nice report. I think at the, the last board meeting, the board did have an opportunity to discuss that May meeting date, and it sounds to me like that was.
That seemed to be, though.
Yeah.
And that's what we were reflecting, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
But we wanted to come back more with the prioritized list and get a final, you know, go ahead. go-ahead.
Are there any questions or comments for Gloria? Okay. Oh, Barbara?
Just to follow up to a gentleman that had asked us about what he considered inflated prices, can, did the Arch fellow give you any idea of explaining to the public why the costs of, say, a bathroom renovation are higher for a school district than if you do your own home? I mean, that seemed, there were a number of things in the, in the survey that people thought, it just seemed so far off, and yet we know that, you know, it's based on reality.
Right. And I think, I wasn't there, but I believe in the evening meeting at the library, that was brought up again, or was it the day? Were you there, Neil, that time?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk to that? Because they did deal with that.
Obviously, we have different regulations in school districts, because we're run by the New York State Education Department than ours, a typical homeowner. And one of the most common things that you can look at is, most houses are wood frame structures. All of our buildings, as you can see, are concrete and steel. The safety element is very high in our buildings, so we have to build with better products. They're overbuilt, for obvious reasons. They serve as shelters. They shelter a lot of children during the day naturally, but they also serve as community shelters, and they're built with that in mind. So schools traditionally are overbuilt, highly regulated in terms of their functions. So the costs are going to be higher, because the products need to be better within the building. In terms of looking at a capital project, what schools face is the prospect in the beginning of trying to put a project before the voters, but without having a full design done by an architect. So if we play this out and said we had an architect come in, we might pay them on a project this size of what we proposed, several hundred thousand dollars, to go through and figure out where all the pipes are going to run, what size, all the engineering that goes along with plumbing, electrical, construction materials, roofing, so on and so forth. Nobody wants to spend that money upfront, commit to paying that money upfront, when you don't know if the voters are going to approve the funding at all. If the voters don't approve the bond referendum, then we'd have to find some way of our general operating budget to then pay for architect fees that will, in a lot of cases, not be useful, because by the time we go back, requirements will have changed, and they'll have to be relooked at again. So the process that all school districts use, when you're developing a referendum, is we work with our architects and engineers to come up with cost estimates. And the cost estimates are based on recent projects, current pricing that's coming in from outside firms. We have rough numbers, but we haven't identified every system. We haven't identified every linear feet of pipe, of flooring necessarily, the type, the composition, what's going to happen, what we might find in terms of demolition work that we might have. We might have to remove asbestos, we might not. So those, some of those factors all have to be accounted for. What's, and when we get to construction, which is going to be a couple of years down the road, what are costs going to be then? What are fuel costs going to be then? You know, energy costs, product costs, materials, what's labor going to increase by during that time, from the time the voters approve the project until we're actually doing construction? Number, materials, you can think of all the elements that may change. We have tariffs now that are coming into conversations. Will the tariffs ultimately affect the product, the price of products that we put into the buildings? So there's a lot of uncertainty that has to be accounted for to make sure we have enough money within the voter referendum to pay for the actual work that's going to be done once it's been designed. So there is an estimating process, but it's not exact, because we don't have a full design for knowing where everything is going to fit into the building, what path it's going to take, size of plate, linear feet, what will cost to install, and labor rates, and so on, and so on, and so on. So it is an estimated number, and it has to account for changes that may occur between the time that we have the referendum until we're able to do construction, and through the construction cycle. And our project was intended to take two years, so, you know, we're out a year and a half, then we have one year of construction, and then another year of construction. So we're trying to make sure we have enough money to pay for anticipated cost increase during that time period.
Just to follow up to that, I think we all understood everything that you just said, but I'm just wondering if we could take your little dissertation here and make a video or something and put it on, you know, our, our channel, because really, a lot of people don't understand how complicated it is to get a bond issue ready, prepped, and then, you know, implemented. It's not something that's going to happen 20 days later. It's two years down the road, and yet, that is the thing that I heard time and time again, you know, everything's overblown, and well, there are reasons, you know? And so, just Communications Committee, if you think about it, I mean, you explain it so beautifully, you could fluff it up with some music or something.
It won't be me singing.
Neil, fluff it up.
Thank you so much.
I want to see Neil dance.
Okay, and now we move to Communications. Gloria, are you giving that as well?
I will, since Sean's not here. We met on November 19th, first thing we did, and we hope we've done something positive with this. We've did a third rewriting of our board self-evaluation. Sean wanted, and the worst way to get this to one page, but we'd have to shrink the font so small, we'd all be getting out magnifying glasses, so we did go with the two pages.
Two sides.
Two sides, I'm sorry, two sides. Not so bad, Ben, that way. We're, we're bringing it to you tonight. We would like to ask that we implement this and maybe give it a try tonight. We're looking at, how long does it take us to do it? Is it positive feat? You know, are we getting what we need? And then we do this for a few meetings, and then revisit, you know, say, is it, are we getting still what we need? Do we need to tweak it anymore? How do we feel about it? But at least if we can give it a start, and we thought of it doing it electronically, but we felt this would be quicker and easier. You get it on your table, Linda would put it there tonight, and we'd just quickly go down and do it at the end of the meeting. Are you all in agreement to try this?
Would that be harder to compile?
Not really. I don't think it would be that hard.
Okay. Oh, like handwritten comment? Like, how do we get it back handwritten comment?
We'll get it off the Friday, you'll, we'll get it reported in the Friday.
Right, but it typed out?
Well, it'll be put in like, yeah, just a compilation of how many, or what, any comments on any of them, and then the yeses, noes, the numbers of...
Until we have our name to the comment.
You know, we, we talked about that at, I don't know if we added a, if we, we came, yeah, we, we felt, when we had the discussion, that it was important that people, put your name on it. I mean, we're not saying anything.
We should tell them that.
We should own what we say, and then we could say, oh, so-and-so had this problem, you know, what, what can we do to make this better?
Right. Theoretically, we'd be, we'd be looking at the comments if there was a problem, right? You know, so if, if the agrees and disagrees, there was a discrepancy, or we all said, we all disagreed with one of the criteria that we wanted to meet, then we would go to the comments and, and have a discussion to resolve it before it became an ongoing problem.
I don't think it needs to be reported by person, but I think...
I'm just asking, because it came up before. This is way better than the other one.
Oh, let's hope, yeah.
Thank you for not putting human endeavor. You're not...
Tried. Human dimension.
Human dimension, whatever.
We worked.
Whatever it means.
We really worked at this.
And the surprise, the, the last one, is that like a, like a negative thing, or...
No, because we, in our handbook, you know, one of the things we said we would prepare for meetings is that we would ask questions beforehand if they needed any research, that we would let people know that this was an issue and we're going to bring it up, that we wouldn't just come to a meeting, unless something came up and you needed to bring it up, that's different, but we wouldn't come to a meeting intending to kind of surprise people with a topic, or a problem, or a thing, so that people weren't prepared with the information they needed to answer it, or things like that. That's all.
Is it, is it possible to have this in the hard copy, but also have it electronically? Personally, I like to reflect on the meeting and then respond to these questions.
Oh, no, we want you to do it.
I don't...
Right at the end of the meeting, Christine, that's the object. Get your gut feeling out there and see, see how you feel.
If you don't do it right away, you may...
I don't do it, yeah. We just really want...
I did it online, and I appreciated having the time to think about it and go back in and do it. I mean, some of these, I, in my opinion, require a little bit more thought, and I'll just cut them to pieces.
How about we compromise? We try it first for a few times, the way with the committee asked for it, be done right at the end of the meeting, and then if you're still finding it very taxing in a couple meetings, well, we'll...
Well, I'm not saying it's taxing. I think my, personally, my feedback would be maybe more informative for myself and the board if I were able to think about it and then write these things down. And also, I was a little bit more comfortable with it being anonymous. Sometimes when there were issues at board meetings, I was comfortable identifying them. I'm not sure I'd be as comfortable being as open with my comments, with my name on it.
Well, we had, we had a long discussion about that whole thing.
To be honest.
To be honest. We had a long discussion about that, and I guess the majority felt that if you're going to say something...
Own it.
Own it, but, and then if, it also, since your name's going to be attached to it, it would force people to think, how am I saying it? Am I doing it in a constructive way, so that people are going to read this and know it's me, it's going to reflect me? So that's, so we really strongly felt that we should have our names on it.
Okay. I mean, I guess I have no issues with that.
Just sharing what we...
On previous surveys, I'd identified issues multiple times, same issue over and over again, and it persisted, so if this will help, maybe eliminate some of that.
We're hopeful that if we, if the same person kept saying the same thing, then obviously we should be talking about this.
Sure. Tim?
I, I'm just confused, because I thought when we did this previously, and it was online, that there, there came to a point where we got advice to stop doing it.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if we got that advice on a legal basis to stop doing that, why we would want to now go back to doing it. So that would just be my first point. And my second point is that, again, I'll go off of what Seema said on number 10. You know, I would maybe do this survey if you got rid of that number 10. I understand what the handbook says, but there are some times where you just have to use surprise as a strategy at a meeting. It's, it's essential, and, you know, I don't think that should be taken away.
Well, could, could you then say you disagree on, on that part, or, you know, you don't make your comments each time? I don't assume it happens every time, but, you know, you can agree or disagree, and if you don't like it, you can say it, too.
I mean, we were reflecting...
Shouldn't be there.
Well, that's, I, I respect your opinion, Tim, but we were reflecting what we'd agreed to as a board in our handbook. And if we've agreed as a group to follow certain procedures, then we should evaluate ourselves on them. So we were saying that we agreed to these kinds of things, and all we're asking is that we think about at the end of a meeting, did we stay in line with what we were, what we agreed to do? I, I'm sorry, the first thing you said, though, I wanted to say something. What is the first thing you asked about? Oh...
Why we discontinued the previous survey?
Yeah, the reason why we discontinued that, and Seema referred to it, is the wording, it, nobody could interpret what the statements meant, so we were really, we tried to make these very clear, and so hopefully, the information we get would be more helpful. In the other survey, we kind of, we, we were getting information, but we didn't know what to do with it, because the statements weren't very clear. So we said, why are we doing this? It's not giving us anything that's helpful. So we're hoping that this will give the Communications Committee some information that would be helpful, that we could share back with the board, you know, that might be, you know, saying, we're going in the right direction, or there's some things we might want to think about.
Okay.
That's all.
I, I seem to remember it differently. I mean, I know there was frustration with some of the questions, and they were hard to understand, but there were also, you know, I think there were bigger frustrations with, you know, slews of anonymous comments that got very personal at times. They weren't really, they, they weren't going to solve anything. They were going to make more issues, more problems, and I thought we, we got a, you know, a legal advice that we shouldn't be doing it.
Why don't we call, no, we didn't get any legal advice.
I don't remember getting legal advice.
No. I do remember the, our discussion about...
But we got rid of it, so...
We did get rid of it. I'm trying to remember.
Because it wasn't helpful to us. We said, why are we doing this? We weren't getting anything out of it. We weren't moving forward. We weren't able to deal with the questions because of the way they were worded, so we decided we would scrap it, not do it, and then come back to it fresh. That's what we've done.
Did somebody, did we get advice from somebody to get rid of it?
No. We just decided.
I can't remember what...
Yeah, I wouldn't want to say anything.
Well, we were on Communications Committee that was talking about it.
Okay.
So, maybe we can revisit it there, too.
Yep, sure.
Can I just ask for clarification and/or an addition to this? I think in some of the, in one of the comments, two, three, and four are the ones that I kind of either want a clarification for, or if we could put in a column for an NA where it's not applicable at all meetings. Number four, the board adhered to procedures to allow for public input in a respectful manner in comments or referred for appropriate follow-up. That doesn't happen at every meeting, where the public...
Well, we do adhere to procedures, like, the president does ask, is there a public comment? Maybe there is, maybe there isn't, or there not. If there's not, but do we follow the procedures, in other words?
Not observed.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Well, can you check that? Would that work?
You could check "not observed," but if you wanted to, but...
Is not observed, like not, well, no...
You didn't observe anyone, we pour out.
It means there's nothing to be observed.
Say, nobody got up.
Okay, okay, so that would be not, I guess, I guess I need a clarification then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nobody got up that night.
What does, what is meant by board members added and/or changed agenda items, both before and during a meeting, and did so in a clear constructive manner? How does one do that bef...
Well, sometimes we, in the course of a meeting, we might take a vote or change of, do something differently than exactly on the agenda, and if we do that, it just says we did it in a clear constructive manner. We didn't, no, but people didn't act confused.
Like when somebody, like when somebody asks, can I remove this from this part of the agenda?
Or, you know, do it, move it to later, or, or have a vote to suspend something.
Moving a discussion up.
Okay. Things like that, that it's done in a clear manner, that nobody's, and if somebody felt that it wasn't done, that they were totally lost, they would write that. I didn't understand that.
And what is meant by the board meeting reflected the appropriate governance role of the board?
We dealt with the things that boards deal with, boards of educate, that were within our parameters.
But wouldn't we do that at every meeting?
Well, you know...
That's one, I get the point, I want a clarification, because I just...
Yes, that's what we do. We follow the agenda, those are within our, if we follow the agenda, those are within our governance procedures, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
But...
If it shouldn't be an issue, why would we evaluate it? That just seems confusing to me.
This was one of the things that we came up with on our list. I'm trying to remember what the discussion was on that one. Anybody in that room remember that one? It's been so many meetings ago.
Those were the only three that I was like, it was like another one, I just didn't know what was meant by it, so...
I mean, you know what you suggested? To try it a few times?
Barbara?
I've read that as sort of, you're not micromanaging the implementation of a program or something like that, that, you know, you're aware of it, but the day-to-day activities are basically left to the staff. You're not saying, you know, well, I think you should have three nuggets here, and four over here, or something like that.
The, the other thing is, you know, this doesn't necessarily need to be designed for the nine of us, right? If this tool works, then it can be used by future boards going forward, and, you know, there can be issues that do arise under these categories, you know, depending on who, who the makeup of the board is. So, you know, if we can click agree on all of these every meeting, well, that's, that's the goal, you know? So, so if there is no issue, then that's good. That doesn't make the tool not useful, if it helps keep us on track.
Other questions or comments?
So are we going to try it a few times? Is that the plan?
Was the board open to that? Trying it maybe three, four meetings?
I'm willing, I'm willing to do it.
Try it tonight, and then three, four meetings, and then see...
Sometimes my handwriting can be sloppy, so I don't know who's going to type.
Linda?
I'll try my best.
And then just to...
Give a writing sample to Linda before you... And then we'll, we'll see the, we'll see the results on, in the Friday weekly report, and then Communications Committee during its meetings will monitor those responses. during its meetings, will monitor those responses.
I'll just, if, maybe you want to write in the comments section this time around if you have problems with some of them, just so that if we are hearing that from lots of you, then it can go back to committee and we can revise it.
Right. Or if the wording's not heard. We also looked at, we also kept up with the activities calendar. We're monitoring board, what the board should be doing each month. We're trying to go through the whole year, keeping track of that, so that we can put something together for us at the end of the year, and get a good look at each month, and how our direction is, what our direction is. And third item, we got into a pretty good discussion about the thought exchange follow-up. If some of you might recall, we mentioned that at the last meeting. It's a tool that is available, if you subscribe to it, that would provide an opportunity for a community. Could be the school community, could be the community at large, all, any community members to respond to a question of importance. So, you'd put a question out there, and then people could engage using a computer. And then they would rank the responses. You would put your responses in. You could see other people's responses. Then you would rank them. And you could try to capture and prioritize things as they come through, and ideas and comments on things. Marie had the opportunity to go to a conference on it. And then I was able today to go into a webinar where they actually, we got to do it, based on a presentation and a situation out in Rochester. Communications Committee is continuing to look at this seriously as perhaps a tool we might use, especially when we're coming up with some topics like school start time, the capital, the capital project, and any, and any other issues.
The visioning process would be huge.
The visioning process we're talking about over the next year or so. It's a powerful way of engaging people in a positive conversation. So, and we'll be sharing more of that as we become more comfortable with it. If we feel that we want to come forward, we'll come back to the board with more information about it. But this is something we're spending a lot of time at right now. And next agenda, next meeting is December 10th at 8:00 at the district office. We'll be looking at the website and the social media analytics. Aubrey's going to come back and talk to us about those two things. We're going to look at the calendar again. We just keep that kind of on our agenda. We're going to look at thought exchange. Again, we're following up and continuing our conversation. And we're going to look at the one part of the handbook which has come up a couple of times called responding to emails. We're going to look at that page again, see what we think, if our wording is clear, if we need to put anything more in. And that was it.
Thank you. Policy?
You have fruits of our labor, and we're meeting again on the 10th, 57.
Great. And now we move to public comment number two. Linda, has anybody signed up? Okay. Board issues, ideas, and sharing. Anybody? Gloria?
I had an opportunity. I know Tim was there too. I don't know if anybody else got there. We went to, over to Farnsworth. I'm sure you're going to say something too, Tim. They had the grade six Hiawatha team had its yearly sharing, project sharing and learning fair kind of thing. Always, always a lot of fun. I want to thank Vivanne and Ramses, who were my guides, took me around and shared projects with me, and got me to do some interpretations and some figuring out problems in math and stuff like that. I actually got to sit down at the computer and actually use school tools, as, you know, a kid would. It was really, that was enlightening to me. So, I want to thank them and thank Mrs. Minow and Mr. Rogatsky, who every year put this on and make an open invitation for us to come and enjoy. And I know, Tim, you probably want to thank.
Yeah, I'll piggyback onto that also. Thanks to Mrs. Minow and Mr. Rogatsky. Very good conversation with Mr. Rogatsky afterwards. He was very open to a board member coming to his classroom and to their team anytime to check things out. So, he definitely offered that up. Great teachers, great people. It was really interesting, the, you could see so much integration, I guess is what I took from. Their whole presentation, they kind of focused on ancient Mesopotamia, which I know about that much about, and the students knew quite a bit about, and just showed that knowledge across all curriculum areas, science, math, social studies, language arts, especially technology, too. I'll thank my guides also, because they were just adorable. Natalina and Marina, and they were so funny when I first got there. They're former GDS students, so, and they were saying right away how much they miss elementary school. But Natalina had Mrs. Heran for third grade. So, for the rest of the time I was there, I was, you know, Mrs. Heran's husband. So, yeah, I kind of lost my identity, but they were so great. They were just very happy to read everything that they had written, whether it was a poem or a math problem. I also, I tried to, I thought I was trying to be clever when one of the math problems that they had, that they were reading, started out with Ramses. And I thought, oh, is that one of the leaders from that time period? And they were like, no, that's one of our students.
I had Ramses.
Yeah.
That's my guide.
So, that was a big fail for me. But they were great. The whole classroom was just buzzing. Lots of parents there, too. At the tail end, because, you know, I know you must, it just brings back all the great memories, and you miss being around the kids and their energy. And we got, you know, I always like to ask, what are you reading? What books are you reading? So, we got in this great discussion of Andrew Clement's book. He's one of my all-time favorites. Always used his books for read alouds. And we got talking about this book in particular, one of his latest called The Loser's Club, and which has, again, right away, you're thinking, The Loser's Club. What in the world is that all about? And it's actually with the name that they gave a reading club for after-school activities. And again, you might be thinking, well, why would they call it The Loser's Club? Why wouldn't it be the, you know, We Love Reading Club, or something like that? And the reason they chose that was very clever. And I would say, by the end of the book, the whole term loser took on a very different meaning. And so, we enjoyed talking about that. And if you'd like to know more, you should go out and get this book, definitely, and read it. But I'm going to drop this off to them tomorrow, so they have it in their classroom library, because I actually read it and I'm done with it. And so, it was really nice. And the other great thing about this book is it's kind of one of those books where there's a lot of discussion of books within the book. So, there's a lot of references to Hatchet, or Julie of the Wolves. And in the back, there's a big checklist of all the different reading materials that the author likes. And it's all in this big form of a checklist. So, you know, the girls right away were thinking, you know, that'll give us book ideas. So, it was just fun. You know, it's always great to hear them talk about their reading, talk about their own work, and talk about their classmates. And they had a really nice event going on there. So, it was a lot of fun. I thank everybody involved.
And the parents were really, I think Emily said there was something, 88% of the class had parents there. Sixty kids. It was really a great turnout.
Thank you. Others? Okay. Sure.
So, I have an idea, and it's not for Gildeland per se, but it is exciting, and it's education-related. So, it's not breaking kids up by age. And it's an idea that I've been thinking about, that I've been reading about for a long time, and it just kind of clicked this week. So, that's why I wanted to share it. And the way it clicked was this quote from Frederick Lister Burke. He wrote this in 1913. He says, "A class system has been modeled upon the military system. It's constructed with the assumption that a group of minds can be marshaled and controlled in growth in exactly the same manner that a military officer marshals and directs the bodily movements of a company of soldiers. In solid, unbreakable phalanx, the class is supposed to move through the grades, keeping in locked step. This locked step is set by the average pupil, an algebraic myth born of inanimate figures in an adult pedagogy." So, the idea of mixing students from different grades is something that is so alien to us at this point, that it was an idea that even for me, and I'm on like the leading edge of all these types of progressive movements in education, I couldn't quite wrap my head around. And this quote helped me understand that so much of the ranking that goes on, and so much of the big consternation in having AP classes, and focus classes, and special reading groups, and, you know, how you have to have six different levels within one grade, comes from the fact that we are so insistent on putting all the kids in the same age in the same grade. When if you allowed some rooms with some flexibility, then maybe it would be easier. Kids could learn from older kids, that type of thing. So, anyway, like I said, I'm not actually suggesting that for Gildeland yet. But I did, that did click for me this week, and so I thought I'd share it.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And we have had combination classrooms in the past in Gildeland. You might have third and fourth, or something like that over the years. So, it's not like it hasn't happened before.
Thanks, Ben. Anyone else? Okay, so now we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss issues pertaining to the potential discipline of particular persons, and issues pertaining to a collective bargaining issue with the GTA. And we will also continue our discussion regarding negotiation parameters with the Elderland Administrators Association. May I have a motion to go into executive session? Barbara, second, Seema. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero.
Pass these into Linda.
Sure. Done.